We said the pledge, but we waited for it. Unless you've heard what I said, I said. Ring of menaces to approve those resolutions that she does, she hasn't typed.
All goes on there, on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But. Just so you know. All right. New. But you'd love to say your first name. Who is presenting for that? What do we have tonight? You have any maps? Engineer, anybody here?
I have Stephen on Zoom.
Okay. Hi, is, no, is Joel not there? Joel Rosenfeld?
Yes.
Yes.
There he is.
Hi.
Hi, Joel, did you want to begin or shall I begin? It doesn't matter.
You can begin.
Okay, so I know that there have been some materials that have been submitted to the board. These are by way of update to let you know that we are moving forward. There is been, there has been some study done of the dam. It is not completed yet. The material that we have received indicates that there's further inspection that needs to be undertaken. And that that material is not likely to be available until October. And as we get it, we'll certainly inform the board of what we receive. What we have found up to this point has been some of the prior communications between the DEC and the existing owner that indicate some problems and conditions regarding the physical attributes of the dam that there are apparently some places where the concrete has cracked and some places where there's growth, how severe this is and what is required to cure it. We just don't know yet. That's what's being further examined. Then we have submitted to you some materials regarding conditions on the site in terms of water and septic. Some of the information does not appear to be complete yet, but we're updating you in terms of what we have learned so far about both existing water and septic on site. There's also a plan that has been submitted from Bartlett de Judas that shows the sketch or the plan, the basic plan for the facilities to be that will be proposed to be put onto the property. So those are the.
By the engineering.
I'm sorry.
That's from Riley. That's from Riley.
I'm sorry, my mistake. From Riley, that's correct. Sorry.
This is the town.
That's right. My, my, my apologies. You're absolutely right. Joel, you might want to add anything beyond that, but that's basically the status as I understand it now.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I'm Joel Rosenfeld here helping the applicant. So when we were here last time, the board requested that we do a full site plan survey and site plan, and that's what you have. Riley Engineering did, did the, you know, the topo and the full site plan and then inspected all the water and sewer that's currently on site. And I believe the board got a, a report from, from them. As Stephen had said, an issue came up about the dam. We went to the current owner and they had already engaged with an engineering firm to, to, to do the study and get it in compliance with the DEC. And yeah, it's, you know, we, we two are waiting for that to see, obviously, we are going to make sure to comment that the dam should come in compliance and that all the necessary work should be done either by the seller or by us, whichever, whichever works better. Once we know exactly what needs to be done. So.
The key there, let me just add that the key there is that the DEC is going to tell us all what needs to happen and we'll make sure that that information is communicated to the board.
So like, just like last time, we're, we're basically here with an application, right, for a special use permit, which is to have an educational institution there as a, as a special use, which is a special use that's allowed with a special use permit. And I guess addition, in addition to that, we propose to add a, a swing pool and a mikvah, which is a ritual bath. So that's the next step. First, I guess the first step is if what else we need or, or, or what else we can provide or answer, you know, to get that special use permit.
And if there is any comment letter from your engineer or there's any other material that you have available that we can take so we can respond to those comments or input, we'd appreciate getting a copy. If there's been anything that has been generated.
Correct. On the agenda, says here, right, we just got the agenda today. It says here, a letter from Barton and La Judas, but we, we have not received any letters. So I'm just wondering what that is.
I think I probably have your, your email address. I can send that to you if you wish.
Yeah, that would be great. And has it been, right, has it been filed with the board yet or submitted to the board yet?
Yes, last week.
Okay, great. Yeah. So if that could be emailed to me, that would be helpful. And then I'll get it to the right folks on our end. Thinking, looking at the maps at the pool and the bit of a are very close to the road and we have to have a leach field in there. It looks like there's quite a few benchmarks for height here. Maybe it would be better located out in one of your other areas. You've got a lot of land down on the other side of the road. A lot of land up beside the lake. That wouldn't be an eight foot fence right by the road. And a leach field that's going to overflow into the road. Applying for an eight foot fence.
We had a person in town take down an eight foot fence and put up a six foot fence.
The, the town codes says you need a special use permit.
Someone put up an eight foot fence. See how we could give someone else a special commission to do an eight foot fence.
Brad, do you want to say anything else?
Yeah. The water reports, water and septic report from Riley was somewhat helpful. When a dotedly, I know this was a retreat center before and served many, many people. What I was hoping the report would do would include whatever files, you know, what was the system submitted on? New York State Department of Health. What were the proposed flows back then? You know, are there any records on the wells? I mean, it's the site supported. But that was a while ago. What I'm looking for, what I was hoping to see in the report is there's 150 students, there's 25 staff. We have such and such gallons a day for each one of these. The extra bathrooms near the pool, not a big deal, you know, if they're using that bathroom, they're not using another one. The pool, if that has backwash waste, kind of need to know where they're going. Because that's new.
Are, Brad, are these items that are in your letter or are these in addition to what's in your letter?
These are part of my letter that I'll send to you, but you know, I would like, you know, all the information that the health department has. And what Riley said in their report is they combined that information with some of their field investigations, which is good, but would have been nice if that was included as an appendix. In other words, what was this approved as? What kind of flow? What kind of flows are they getting out of the well? I know it's a deep dig, but it's part of the homework that is the assurance that when the, that the adequate water supply and sewage disposal can happen.
Well, we will certainly, and I'll certainly ask Riley whether or not they looked at the DOH documents. They may have needed to foil them. I don't know if they did, but we will certainly look to see what is available from DOH and get you whatever documentation it is that was filed with DOH. Certainly we'll do that legwork and get whatever is available.
So I can, I can add to that, that we did foil DOH. They weren't so forthcoming in giving us what we needed. And the, the records are very, very sketchy. And if you go online on the DOH's website, it, it just says that the water system is approved for 500 people. But being that this is a very, very old property, I think there was, we spoke, there was a camp, I think Steve said you went to camp there in 1960 or something.
I did. A little bit later, but not much.
So it's very old and you know, add, 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 and the, the records at DOH are very, very sketchy. Actually, they, they barely have anything. So, so, so that's why we, we took a little bit that, that they had, you know, they had the locations of the wells and, and, and the systems showing, you know, chlorination, et cetera, and testing every year, but flows and stuff they didn't have. And that is, you know, in combination of what Riley saw when they came down.
I, I think what would be helpful is let's speak to Riley and make sure that whatever papers we got from DOH that we submit to Brad and submit to the board just so that they have everything we have. And then the engineers will draw whatever inferences they can draw from this, but we should give them the source material, whatever we got from foil. Okay?
That would be great. I think there was discussion at the last meeting that there is a a firm that essentially takes care of the system, does the routine testing. And I don't believe there's been a lot of flow lately, but you know, what I would, what I'm hoping happens, what I think needs to happen before you put in 200 people that is to, with your system operator or bringing someone from New York State Health Department that basically inspects the system, say, yep, this thing is ready to serve water. You've got all the elements here. There, here are the records from firm XYZ that takes care of it. And we're here to just do a final lesson. And it's ready for operation. Short of that, you've got an older system that you know.
We'll, we'll discuss that certainly from our end. And I'm not sure how many, what maintenance records are available, but we'll certainly look to see what they are. And then I think what I'm taking from what you're saying is that we need to come up with some way of confirming for the board and for the board's engineer that the systems that are there, if we're going to rely on them in the, without making major changes, that they're adequate to do their job safely and properly. So I think that's, that's what I'm hearing and we'll, we'll take that burden on.
Okay.
Right, just to add that. Add that obviously before we move in, when, when that happens, we will need to get a health department permit.
That's right.
For water sewer, like, like any, any use. In addition to any approval that we do get from the board or from the town, the state DOH will, will issue yearly permits on the, you know, the health and safety.
Right. I think, Joel, the thing also that I'm hearing, and I think this makes sense, is that the board and its engineer would want to know that at least we've done enough work to confirm the functionality of the systems so that we're not going to have to propose radical new additional systems. We've already been told by Riley that we're likely to need one more leach field. And where that gets located and so forth is going to be part of the application. So I think what we're hearing is let's be sure that there isn't anything more that's required. So we know what kind of disturbance will occur on the site and where. That's what I'm here.
It's kind of similar to the dam, you know, you want to know what, you know, your final efforts are going to be, what, what they will be, how much cost they'll entail. You know, it's kind of similar to the dam in that regard.
Okay. Joel, is there anything else you wanted to add or does the board have any other questions?
People from the area, I mean, Lee, maybe that a retreat served 50, 60 people at a time in the past. Not much more than that. So not these, not these systems can what has, has to be done. I think that's the, that's kind of, that's got to be determined first before we do anything.
Yeah, I think that's right, that we need to make sure that given the projected number of people that are there, that we can assure whoever has jurisdiction that the systems are going to be able to function and function properly. So there won't be any public health problems and certainly none of the adjoining and neighboring property owners will have pro- problems on their lands as a result of what's going to happen here in the future. So we'll, we'll take that burden on. That's a fair request.
And also the concern that Kenny brought up about the, when we saw the site plan about the the pool and the mikvah being so close to, that's something else that we should address also.
Right. I heard that. I heard that. And we will certainly go back and look at the site to see what the best location is. If there's a reason why it needs to be where we're proposing it, we'll come back and tell you. If there's a better location for it, we'll go, certainly go back and look at it and taking into account of the proximity of the fence to the property line in the street, taking into account where the leach field will be and the, the potential issues there could be if there is a problem with that leach field. So I, I heard that loud and clear.
There are other concerns too about things like garbage control and wildlife. That, that everything is going to be a lot of bears back there. There's a lot of wildlife walking around here.
Yeah, I don't think that there's much proposal to change a good deal of the natural environment that is on the site. I think most of that is being left as is. If your concern is that the people there might be endangered, that's one thing. But I don't, I don't think that there's any intent at least to radically alter the undisturbed lands that are there now.
No, no, I'm not talking about, talking about that. I'm just talking about control of, of waste and things like that.
Sure. Certainly want to have proper garbage enclosures so that there aren't nuisances with bears and the like. So yes, that I think will be something we'll incorporate. And that's a pretty standard type item. And if it isn't clear in our application, we'll make sure that it's enunciated clearly. Okay. Any further comments? At this point, I don't think we're taking any actions tonight. Yeah, I think we're a little bit early yet for a request for a public hearing. There's a bit more material I think that needs to come into the board. And then of course, we do have, I think when you meet next is right when Rosh Hashanah occurs. So what, what we, we will probably get more materials to you, but we'll talk on our end, whether or not we can appear at the next planning board meeting, given the, the Jewish holidays or whether it'll have to wait until October. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. By the, to submit additional documents, I know the requirement is like just for applications, like 10 days before, what's like the deadline, let's say for next meeting or, or the following?
Before the meeting. And we're the fourth Tuesday normally, which is conflict for you so that they can get to Brad and so on. That's about the two weeks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Enjoy. Thank you, everybody. Good to see you all. And sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I can't be in three places at the same time. Have a very good night. Oh, Steve. Okay. Next item on the vis- agenda is Kathy Hector subdivision, Mike.
I know, all over you. Kathy Hector, does anybody have a set of plans on this something? Kathy Hector, around the corner, Bridge Street and School Street. I think it's what, one and a quarter acres. It has a house. And it's such a system that, that this house septic and water, what she wants to do is create two lots. Very, there's a row of pine trees up there. That's what she, she wants to put the trees for the house. And it's just clear the tree line, keeping the, she's going to keep it smaller alive. And the plan is to sell the point eight, point eight place. It, it, you should have the GBL 239, short form.
Yes.
The application.
So.
The deed into it. Yeah, I think I put a D in it also. And I spoke to town water, water sewer. Hook up to point four three acreage. There is no problem to hook up to the point four three acreage. If she ever does anything with it, she just has to pay for it to hook up.
And both lots are in excess of 15,000. So they're okay.
Yeah. Oh, the only one thing was there is a, I was, I was you want to call it, still, still head box unit property by the cemetery. That in order to pass this, he wants that gone. So I spoke to Kathleen and she's going to have Ed Guthrie, Jeanie's boyfriend. He will be moving in prior to public hearing if you give me public hearing. And then I'll take it off.
For application, we've got 75 from Kathy. I think we're going to need about the 35. Right? 75 for subdivision, 35 is still needed. Yeah.
Not when you can't see the amount they're hiding.
Anyway. That's not a big deal.
So do you need the 35, Ken?
But you're going to need it. That's all I'm saying.
Drop it off at the, at the office.
Yeah. All right. You did a 239 and that does have to go in because it's county road. It's good. At this point, I think we're ready to declare that we're lead agency.
Yes.
Right? Too damn many pages. All right. So we take a motion to be lead agency.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor and a second to clear lead agency on the Kathleen Hector subdivision. Any further comment? Okay, vote. Jackson, are you on this Zoom?
No, he's not.
Ed wasn't feeling well this afternoon, so we have to excuse him. Harry?
No, I was just questioning the, the amount of the road project.
Yes.
Joe? John?
Yeah.
I'm a yes, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay, approved to be lead agency. That's real lead agency. We can do the secret, right? I keep digging through the, I know it's.
I haven't always lost it.
No, I'd have enough of them that I really don't want them.
He wanted 15.
I know, but then it comes electronically and I print it and I pick.
I know.
Okay. Do you want to stay there or do you want to sit? Pull there?
I don't care.
Okay, it's a minor subdivision, two lot subdivision for Kathleen Hector at 125 School Street, Narrowsburg. Section lot, block 10 dash 3 dash 8. It's a subdivision of 1.25 acres into two lots. One 1.43 acres, another 1.82 acres. I believe there's, both will be served in sewer, so we don't need to worry about that. Proposed action. Where involved legislation, adopted plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule of regulation. Good. Think you're going on the paper. Answer was no. Does the proposed action require permit approval or funding from any other government agency? And he would put yes, town attested planning board subdivision, Sullivan County Planning Community Development to 239. And we also usually put UDC. I was UDC in on this one. They are because it's in town.
Yep.
So we'll add them to it. Total acreage 1.25 will still be the same when it's finished. Land uses that occur to adjoining or near rural forest, industrial, commercial act like. Well, I guess he checked most everything. No agriculture.
No.
Couldn't find the garden.
Libertarian.
Is the proposed action, putting it into the zoning regulations, yes. Consistent with adopted comprehensive plan, yes. Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? Yes. Is the site the proposed action located in or does it join the state listed critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above levels? No. Are the public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? No. Are any pedestrian accommodation or bicycle routes available to the site of the proposed action? No. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? No. Will the proposed action connect to existing private public water supply? Yes. And existing lot dwelling on lot two is serviced with municipal water supplied by the town attested and the water authority. Lot one is in the municipal water district also is his comments. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? Yes. And the same type of comment. On, posed site content, or is it substantially contiguous to a building archaeological site or district in which is listed on national state register of historic places? Or that has been determined by the commissioner of New York State Office of Parks Recreation as historic preservation to be eligible for listing on the state register of historic places? No. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to the area designed to present the archaeological sites and the New York State Historical Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? Yes. Archaeologicals. They comment on that? Well, you've checked the yes.
You know, I actually check, I don't check it. That's it generates itself on the back.
Yeah, I, I know. Comment on the back, because I'm interested in what they, what they come up with. St. Francis Cemetery? I don't know.
Yeah, put a buffer, put a buffer around it to see if there's anything with inside of it. And there's nothing inside the buffer area.
See anything either. So I guess we don't have to worry about that.
You want to change it or leave it?
Well, maybe it's there, but it's not significant that we see it. So they could be right. The computer sometimes knows more than we see. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining to the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by federal, state or local agency? No. Couple more. By the typical habitat. That occur on or likely to found the project site. It's suburban. Good. Does the proposed act- action, species of animal or associated habitats listed in state or federal government or threatened or endangered? Yes, timber, rattlesnakes, eagles. Is the proposed site located in a hundred year flood plain? No. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? No. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that result in impoundment of waters that is other liquids, waste or looking at anything? No. As the site of the proposed action or adjoining property, but in the location of active or closed solid based management facility? No. As the site of proposed action or adjoining property been subject to remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste? Yes, and that's because it's not too far from the Cortez landfill.
That's, that's listed on the back too. There's a, pretty much Stapleton back.
Michael has signed it, so we have a. Part one seeker we've been through. We have. Been to accept it.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Yeah.
The whole description of Cortez. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor to accept the seeker for Catholic Hector subdivision. Any further comment? Okay. Barry.
Hi.
Joe. John. Me is I, Peter.
Alright. It's good night on.
Been carried for the seeker. That takes us to a short environmental assessment form for part two. Post action creation, material conflict with the plant use plan or zoning regulations. An option of no or small impact, which sounds good for that. Will the proposed action result in a change of use or intensity of use of land? Well, it's a small and change. Today it's going to be two houses instead of one eventually possibly. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that causes step, step a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action resource change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And if it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? One more house, small impact. Will the proposed action impact public or private water supplies? Small and the sewer wastewater, small. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action revolt in the reverse? To natural resources, adverse change to natural resources. Wetlands, water body, ground, groundwater. Air quality flora fauna. No, Simone Field right now. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. We have completed our section of the seeker. Two, he's found all no or small impacts. So at that point. We can determine that we have. Based on the information and analysis above, then any supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Do we need a motion to take that action, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion to have. Seeker approved with no impacts here. Barry. Vote Barry.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
John.
Hi, hi.
Hi, Peter.
Bye. Okay.
If then, lead agency is town attested planning board. Complete this later.
Okay.
I'll sign it later. We have the two thirty nine M to be taken care of. Our next order of business is we have this item. On our agenda at this point, two lots of. Lots of division. And. We want to. Accept it as presented to set a public hearing. So an item to accept this subdivision.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And to accept the Hector subdivision as presented. Any further comment? Vote Barry.
Hi.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
John.
John, hi.
Me, Peter.
Hi.
Okay. Um, my name is what Amy?
September twenty seventh.
So we don't have any other public hearings. This one should take about five minutes, so seven twenty five. On seven, seven. Here or not? She's not, she's not here. See if the letters get sent out. The five hundred feet.
You guys, you guys do the newspaper. Correct?
Good. Thank you for that, then we're same place.
Definitely go with that, yep.
All good?
All good, so. Next item is Neil Hess Narrowsburg Veterinary Clinic. Um, special use permit. It's in, it's in, uh, Business District. Which that clinic is allowed as a special use. We have, um. One copy of the Sogon map. It's sort of like the site, the site led me to. Driveways, the parking areas, the building. The approach. Business, you good?
I'm good with that. I, I don't.
You got it down that way?
The package.
That's, that's only the building.
Oh, the old bank.
I don't know what they're doing with the loft. Okay, what's happening with the loft? No, you said, didn't say, it didn't say on your plan. Particular use, describing the basement use and all that, so that's why I asked.
It's the main foundation, foundation. It's just, it's not for the public. It's just.
When you weren't in New Jersey, you might camp there or something. Might happen. Right. One of those spots.
What's?
Everybody had a copy of the special use application. Said it's. In John Kirk Road property at one fifty five Kirk Road, section lot, block four dash one dash two. Changed the old Jeff Bank building to a veterinarian clinic. With some. Diagrams of what they wanted to do inside. That point, we now have the survey thing we can see can see. Thing else anybody needs or wants. We like to be an agency, agency as a space.
Yes. I'll make a motion for us to lead agency.
We have a three lead agency in the Narrowsburg Veterinary Clinic. Any further comment on the motion? Vote.
Hi.
Barry, Joe. Jim, John.
Hi, hi.
Hey, Peter.
Hi.
Okay, okay. So it's up to the seeker.
Yes.
I guess we move right along. We'll get out of here before midnight.
Okay.
Thanks to that. Okay. Action is Narrowsburg Veterinary, one fifty five Kirk's Road, Narrowsburg, convert back to a veterinary practice. Sponsor.
Sponsor is Neil Hess.
His phone number and so on. Does the proposed action only involve the legislation, action?
Action of.
Of a plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule or regular. Check this, I guess, since.
Yes.
It involves us giving a special use permit. As you can see, so. Yes, for planning board is.
Yeah.
Okay. Does the proposed action.
Actually require.
Approval funding from any other government agency? No. The site is one point two six acres is going to be remaining the same.
We need to do two thirty nine in this one because it's proximity to the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I just.
I'm sorry, that's where we, that's where we put that in.
Usually, usually identified.
And do we need to put it right?
D C is in on everything.
U D C too.
And do we put us there too?
Yeah. That's.
Okay, so, uh, action improves price approval from the county planning, custom planning in the U D C. And now we're down to the one point two six acres stays. Land uses that occur on adjoining, something is presidential and commercial. That's good. Is the proposed action permitted under the zoning regulations? Yes. With the adaptive comprehensive plan? I think we can say yes, because the comprehensive plan. Came about the same time that that became a roadside business, so.
We'll check, yes.
We'll check, yes. So Mary says.
Uh, yes, I think so.
Consistent with predominant character or existing built natural landscape? Yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it join a state critical environmental area? No. Port Delaware is critical? Uh, that's.
That's down from me.
Yeah. The real one, real one was in Kishin. Post action result in a substance increase in traffic above present levels. Be some, but it was a bank and hedge traffic anyway, so.
No.
Increase shouldn't be bad. Will public transportation services available at or near the site? No. Are any pedestrian accommodation, bicycle routes available at or near the proposed, proposed site? Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state? It should code requirements? No. Will the proposed action connection connect to existing pub, public? How come you check? No.
That's.
Public water?
And on the public water.
Sort of, sort of, but not water, right?
We're telling there was some water.
Port Delaware is. And I don't know that the Jeff Bank was in.
Well, how could it not be when the antique shop, they drilled the well to get out of public water?
You in public water? Do you remember?
I think.
Just in check.
They are.
I don't think they are.
Looked at that when, when the bank sold it.
If they are.
No, I think you're right, Crystal. You're right, Crystal, because we.
I mean, look where Kelly lives. She's, she's town water sewer. He goes not. Like it can go right around it.
Okay. Because I don't know that any of those other places above them have a well. And you don't think they're in the wastewater either?
They're in this.
A B S, right? They're in the sewer, they're not in the.
Okay. Does the proposed site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site or district? It's in the national estate register of historic places. Been determined to be the commissioner of New York State Office of Parks Recreation as conservation to be eligible for listing on state register of historic places? No. Proposed project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to the area designated sensible archaeological sites. State Historic Preservation Archaeological Site Inventory? No. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining a proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by the state or federal agency? No. Would the proposed action physically alter and encroach into existing wetland or water body? Identify the typical habitat that occurs on or is likely to be found in the project site. Now you check suburban because that seems to be the best choice. It's a house in this business, so. Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state? Or federal environmental government threatened, dangerous? Yes, it does.
It does.
Has gold eagles. You might see an occasional snake too.
Maybe.
Is the located in a hundred year flood plain? Without looking, I'd say no.
Does make trouble.
Because it didn't, it didn't flood the campground. Ground, hundred year flood recently, so. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? No. Will the stormwater discharge flow through, flow through properties? No, that's because not, yes. Uh, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that result in impoundment of water or other liquids? No. Side of the proposed action or adjoining property been location of active or closed solid waste management facility? No. As the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been subject for remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste? No.
I don't think we can get away with that.
Okay, we've.
Seeker.
Yes, then, I have lots of questions.
Okay.
This one? No, I don't think so. That's kind of a bunch. Okay, our part. Proposed action.
Action.
Post action create a material conflict? With adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Proposed action result in a change or use and intensity of use of the land? Oh. Will the proposed action imperity or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action happen?
Should happen in.
The environmental characteristics. Establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure? For mass transit biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and if it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? I don't think they're going to use that much. Will the proposed action impact? Water supplies? No. And public sewer supplies and utilities? No. Will the proposed action? The char- character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in inverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality flora fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding or draining problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Okay. We checked all no, so that means we can check the box. The information analysis that we have a supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant economic, environmental, environmental impacts. economic, environmental, environmental impacts.
Motion to accept the.
Seeker. Pushing on the floor for the seeker, uh, for Narrowsburg vet ass. For the comments. Girl call, Barry.
Hi.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
John.
John.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi. Okay.
Do side him. Then through the, uh. Grace to do, it will need a two thirty-nine ham. To make sure that's done. Who's doing this?
Yeah, me and Crystal.
Okay. You need one?
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
At this point, we need a vote on whether we're happy with this item for a special use permit. How about some noise from down here?
Peter.
Motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Forced motion on the floor. They've been too quiet, I want to make sure they're not. Forced motion on the floor for special use permit for Neil Hess Narrowsburg veterinarian clinic. Any further comment on this motion? Mary?
Hi.
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Okay, motion has been carried, let's set a public hearing. This should not be a long one, let's do September twenty. September twenty-seventh. Now, Neil, you're not familiar with probably our procedure, but you need to send notification of the public hearing to everyone within five hundred feet of your property, all sides.
Their certified return receipt.
Yes, certified return receipt, we get the green receipts back and this thing that you sent it. Proof. Uh, you can bring them in at the next meeting. Anything else we need to tell you? That's a bunch of letters. Okay, and you tell the public that you're sending them to, that the public hearing is at seven twenty and nine twenty seven.
Could give him a copy of the notice that we're going to send to newspapers, we could just enclose that in the, uh.
Amy. Amy, do you have a copy that he can have a publication, so you can put in this letter?
Yes.
So get it from Amy. That'll be some wording for you.
He's going to have to come, come to your office to get the. Figure out this with five hundred.
That on the computer on the county side. Zoning is going to stop that crap soon.
To New Jersey, can we get it now, or do you want to email it to them? We'll email it. Just give me your email address and I'll send it to you. We'll be back up on Thursday.
Well, if she emails it, you'll have it in print, it'll be all set.
Yeah.
It'll be better off. Come up.
Yeah. Nice, now.
We need, we need that.
Yes, I am.
Right, because we don't want to lose that one, okay?
No, no. Have things going all the way down the table, table. We had. I had, it's my error. Seen the subdivision for Eagles Nest and rejected. Sent them to the zoning board. Rejection letter from Jim Crowley. That was, was the not proper procedure, and we have to look at it first. And so we are looking at it tonight, everybody here has had new copies sent to them.
Um, I have a hearing problem when I can't.
Closer.
Right off, come on.
So now they're coming along.
Free, free, but I can't sit, so you can hear me.
Can't see him.
You can come up, too, so you keep him in line, line. All right. What I say, you want me to start off? Thanks, fine, fine.
Face my hearing aid.
Run in the subdivision. And saw there was not enough, not enough road frontage on the roads. Sit to the zoning board of appeals without bringing it to the planning.
Planning first.
That's a no, no, I made an error. Even a denial letter from Jim Crowley, they could not, could not accept. Back to us, us.
Cool, can there's, can they're still going through the process, but this is just to fill in one of the checkup boxes that get checked early. There's. No. Maybe we can just do it here. What they're, what they're looking for, for is just this section of laws that, that. Or needs to, needs to recommendationation. So to the Z V A with regard to the, to request, now, what's the last time you, you guys response to request for the Z V? Initially, the present, the, the plan contemplated two lots that didn't, didn't conform with the lot with and, and the lot at the frontage and set, setback. It was, we can figure it so that, so that was definitely going to come from its form, have. And the other lot, so instead of needing four variances, it's only two variances, if that was disaster, in order, in order to make it be the minimum amount of variance.
And the Eagles Nest has been marked on the revised map. It's next door, has a six hundred, six sixty foot.
I have a map here. I have a big.
Okay.
I just didn't know.
Wanted to.
So the applicable sexual section of laws just provides that their Z V and, and the Z V is supposed to request a plan with recommendation nation concern. Express your, you can, you can review, you, you. Including that you position, whether, whether, give them some written response to satisfy the statutory.
I had, as a sessor, had.
What about this, the last, the last word here, because if, once they get done with zoning board and assuming they get the variants, they're going to come back here, you guys are going to do a simple, your standard to lot subdivision, divisionary.
Uh, as a sessor, I sat this area, and there are many two hundred foot and actually under two hundred foot lots on this road. The total of lots on the road that are two hundred or under is thirty.
Well.
Now, they're over is four, is four, Mr. Wigg is being one of them. What I wrote for you guys is the lot requesting subdivision.
Subdivision twenty-three dash one dash point two, I got too many, too many, too.
Are the largest road frontages of the lots on Crawford or Hankins Road. This road typically has a range of just over two hundred feet of road frontage on typical five plus acre lots. Are common finger lots, so they're very deep, with only two hundred foot width. Particular lot is more pie-shaped and has, has a frontage because of the curve in the road. Made a list of them, which I counted up then. This particular lot has only six, six after, after a large sorrel scent parcel. No road frontage, the road just goes into. Thus, there is a relatively little traffic past this lot with only six possible dwellings occupants could have to pass the subject lot. Currently has two dwellings already on it. Created by a small hill in the land, which makes seeing them both at once unlikely. It also means a traffic increase on the upper portion of Hankins Road will not be impacted as a present second house, which is, which is for years, could also be renovated without the subdivision. In reality, the dwellings on these two new lots lots meeting the minimum five acres and will have more road frontage than the typical lot on Hankins Road. There appear to be over thirty, be thirty lots of, of three hundred foot frontage, smallest of forty-five feet. Be four lots over three hundred feet on the inland side of the whole road. Now, there's some lots on the riverside for just a little bit, and I did not count them. The subject of the subdivision, one of the large ones being five hundred forty feet. So. What is the feeling of the board as to how we want to handle this? It looks like it's thing that's going to be un, in common, uncommon, or impact this road negatively, like you want to proceed with it? A positive recommendation? You want approval ourselves?
Saying that, saying that they have, they're basically, two lots are roughly fifteen feet short.
Neil.
Actually, the, the one lot, Barry.
It's changed.
Seventeen, one's fifteen.
Changed that.
Looking at the original, at the original map.
Okay.
And recon, and recon, one lot definitely, definitely has.
Have the new.
Yeah.
The other lot is shy, is shy.
Give us a new maps, I haven't looked at the bigger copy of the new map, and the one I emailed, it's hard to say.
The new one, one of thirty six. Send that home?
Yeah.
This is.
That's the new one.
This is the new one, this is not the new.
And they got. That's the eagle, thirty, three.
Hold on.
Setback line.
This is the roll map.
You only have one new map?
Same.
Same thing.
They just wanted to see the.
Get that one back, look at this one.
That's different, different. Now, what?
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
It's all the same thing, it shows the same.
Same idea, Eddie. There's a few feet missing.
Two sixty-six in the road, so you don't see both houses at once. So. Variances of content. Reducing from three hundred there to two point seven point seven, reducing from three hundred here to two sixty-six.
So one has three hundred, it's a good to go lot completely. The other one's a little bit shy, but they both have one that they.
Can he? Can we? She got.
One's the, because they, they have to have the frontage requirement, and they also have to handle lot width at the setback, the setback line. So both are, both are short, and that's why they do two variances.
Well, it's the same item.
But it's, yeah, and it's the same lot.
Lot a little narrow.
Right, and, and then lot kind of, kind of.
Gets.
Pie-shaped. Right, it's pie-shaped. So various, the, the, the variance at the setback line is a little more of a variance than the variance at the street.
Where he's got proposed dwelling there and ready to get in the setback, so.
Yeah.
Not, not now.
This one, one will be raised.
If you, that, that, when you do this, yeah.
Yeah.
That'll probably be a contingent. Contingency, but if, if, I think, I think they mentioned that, that they would, they would require that be, that be removed as a condition of the variance.
Certificate of compliance.
But it's, but it's really affecting the most is the one that's already there, and it's like. Seen a reason why you. That's coming down.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we can't make a recommendation.
Do we want to make more than recommendation?
Fine with whatever we need to.
Do we want to?
Homes.
Use one of. Trump cards and say it's okay.
I think I, instead of holding it up, can, we can do that, right?
Well, you're not approving the sub, the subdivision.
No, we're not.
You can, you can. So the signature. You, you can't, you have, you can't do that.
Why not?
Because they need the. But we have a right to wave front footage in our zone. We're still going to have to public here.
Although.
The subdivision. From scratch, from scratch. But you've already got a Z V A process in place, and there's, and, and it's a hot item.
Oh.
Right. I think you're going to make it worse, not, that's not better.
Done.
No, it'll just shift the, shift the, it'll shift the worth from there to here.
Well.
Want that work. We don't want that.
So we make a recommendation, we have no problem with this.
Make a motion, can we make a motion?
Make a motion that it's, that it's, that, that the, that the, the field might in writing, writing that the zoning board, that, that the planning board, um, is disposed, disposed towards the granting of the variant, requested variances.
That's perfect. Because that's exactly, actually, right?
Yeah. And, and you can direct that Amy, send a letter to that effect, to the, uh, to the planning board.
And now, should we vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make that.
Motion and second and vote.
You're making the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. We happen to recommend to the zone, to the. The subdivision. The.
Go through with one, with one lot with slightly less front, frontage and setback footage.
And you should attach your explanation as the assessor to it.
Onto what?
Your, your explanation that you read.
A little survey that you did.
We have to go.
I'm not sure I want to attach that, but I might go there.
You may go there.
Yeah.
Or something.
I'm a little aggravated, I might go there.
You may just.
Okay, otherwise we can attach it. Uh, we have a motion on the floor, any further comment, the comment? Vote, Barry?
Hi.
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Peter.
Hi. Okay.
At least a helmet that can prove this.
Because the Z V A.
Could be getting the new ones, too.
Okay, yeah.
I have one, one question, I go back to the Z V A now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right back, right back where you left off.
They're going to get our recommendation.
That's, that's.
Allows one of the, one of the issues that was raised at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just working on, working on the other.
One other question was raised, there was the county.
It gets, it gets, if it's going to the county, it's going to the county for two thirty-nine.
It doesn't need to.
Yeah, no, that's not.
Okay. I don't remember what it was going on.
They don't need.
Mister Chairman, so you have one copy or the new one?
New one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's down.
Yeah.
This was much easier than the last time, before the planning board Eagles Nest, it took me three and a half years.
Remember, and I also well remember, we had to do the seeker with nobody.
Right. Thank you. You're welcome. Yes.
That's, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Looking on.
Thank you.
Well, now, but they're, they're so.
Combination, are we doing? Are we doing this now? That's all.
Yeah, you're just.
Okay. Oh, I wasn't sure. Just checking. Keeping you on task.
All right, I emailed you this, so you'd get a whole bunch of copies. I know how many of you know where Rob Zaccari's home is located, but just per side of it, are two lots that they wish to combine. One has a mobile home on it, like, like, so it takes up a lot of the two hundred foot lot, another one's vacant. Uh, it's located at ten sixty-seven County Route twenty-three, parcel number is twenty dash one dash seven point three of five point five five acres. And twenty dash one dash seven point four of five point seven acres. Questions for me that you have on that?
No.
No.
I'll make a motion then.
Okay, a motion to do, approve the combination of lots to, to, like, maybe, I'm saying.
Did you, did you, did you, Rick?
Whatever.
Okay.
If you want, if you want. Okay, we have a motion to, to approve the combination of lots. Any further discussion?
They're combining to what amount?
Five point five five, and one is five.
One is five point seven acres, so you'll have over eleven acres. And for the, for a front.
Just cleaning, cleaning up. Just clean, cleaning up the.
It's one of those finger lots we'll be getting, we'll be getting rid of for now.
Hi.
Mary.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Peter.
Hi.
If the two thirty nine M, and it's a division lot where Dick, who has the sawmill off of. And we used to call it Strassel. To check in this called Dob Road. Now it may have changed to Dob. It's off Hoffman between. Hoffman Road and, uh, Town of Kuscheckton Line. Everybody looked over what we've got. The map and two lots and I believe these lots do not touch the town of Tustin line because who does touch us? Last lot in our, in town of Tustin also. So anyway. Too magnanimous for causing problems to me. Anybody have any comment?
A little too far back there.
Yeah, too far back.
Here, yeah.
That shouldn't do it.
Prove it.
I, I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to have no objection and by the county that we have no objection. To the subdivision in town of Kuscheckton. Any comment? Mary said her.
I'm not, I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye.
Joe?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi, Peter?
Hi.
Thanks.
You're up to. We done. Two public hearings we need. Any comment from the board on tonight's meetings? Meeting reminder for September twenty seventh. Seven thirty. A public.
No, because. Funny.
Yeah. The meetings hopefully we've done for some.
I'll make the most.
I don't think we have to vote on this. It's just Karen.
Karen.